Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To republiques, puritistes, hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cecily, roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Thorstad.
Here.
Counselor Trask.
Here.
Proton Moller.
Here.
Mayor Coleman.
Present. Let the record show that we have seven present and none absent. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have three packets of minutes in there.
We can most approve.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Um, Kelsey or Cecily, would you please call for a vote?
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Thorstad.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Proton Moller.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays. Moving on, recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Small municipalities advocacy coalition. Um, Sean Tate is here and he's going to come forward and explain this to us. It is. Um, name and address for the record and uh, speak into the mic, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Sean Tate, 399 Waters Edge Court, Lebanon, Oregon. Here on behalf of Tate Public Affairs, which is my organization and here to talk to you today about small municipalities advocacy coalition. Excuse me, I'm not sure where everybody's going to be looking and where I should be looking at this presentation as well, but let me make sure that the buttons work. There we go. Um, a little bit about myself before I get too deep into what we call SMAC, which is a lot more fun than saying small municipalities advocacy coalition over and over again. About 14 months ago, I was um, reading an article in the Democrat Herald that is this better? Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Uh, an article in the Democrat Herald uh, that mentioned multiple communities in the central Lamont Valley. Time discussing how frustrated they were with their levels of representation they were, that they were receiving at the state level relative to the existing model of advocacy for cities. So I reached out to Scott McDowell, who is the general manager, excuse me, the city manager of Brownsville, the general manager of Brownsville too, I guess. City manager of Brownsville, and we had multiple conversations about this idea and assembled the core group about three or four months ago, kind of finalized it. Um, I don't bring a um, um, public policy background to advocacy. I don't have a degree in political science. I have a degree in marketing. I don't love um, politics. I love good policy, alright? And I wrote my entire business plan up based on the idea that small municipalities in Oregon do not get the representation that they deserve based on the way the advocacy models work now. So anyway, that's a little bit about me. Um, I think this is my favorite, probably my favorite slide in the entire presentation because it was really the, the, the first thing that got me interested in politics. The idea that just because you don't take an interest in politics doesn't mean politics does not take an interest in you. I suppose that's why a lot of us are here um, in this role. How many of us expected that we would have involvement in politics and policy at some point in our life when we were young? I did not. It was the furthest thing from my mind, but yet here we are. So some of the points that I like to try to make when I talk to policymakers about, about SMAC is that Oregon is in general, a very, very rural state. There are 241 reporting communities in the city, alright? On the, the list of actual and reporting cities in Oregon. 217 have populations less than 25,000. 185 less than 10,000 and 162 fewer than 5,000. If you take the top 10 most populated cities in Oregon off the spreadsheet, the average city population in the state is 5,800. Okay, we are a state of small communities, right? That's a fact. And we carry with us the small town problems that are just as serious, um, but perhaps scaled a little bit differently than the larger communities. Rural communities have the same problems and challenges related to infrastructure, housing, developable land and available revenues to get those jobs done, right? There's very little grace for the differences between large communities and small communities and uh, certainly when it comes to where the funds come from to do some of this work that you want. Whereas some cities get, as was evidenced in this last session, $20 million to clean up Portland's streets. We have streets, right? And we didn't get any money to clean ours up and they're going to tell us to go get a grant. Right? And then we're going to have to write a matching check to go get the grant. So you can see there's some inequities in the system. Few policymakers outside of rural areas understand a rural economy. They don't know what drives a rural economy. They don't know what makes people want to live in a rural area. And in my opinion, we need to be seen as more than just quaint places to visit. And then advocacy challenges. So the larger cities, the, the current advocacy model, right? Is, is essentially driven by the larger communities in the state, right? And not taking anything away from the organizations that do what they do for our cities right now, but the model is such that the larger cities get the, they are the ones that squeak the loudest. They are the ones that get the oil, so to speak. So we're looking for ways to change that. So here's what we really are. SMAC Oregon is a growing partnership of small communities who are mutually invested in being a strong voice for rural Oregon. That's probably the easiest way to describe it. We are trying to truly prioritize rural Oregon as a policy area as opposed to just cities as a policy area or communities as a policy area or infrastructure as a policy area because our issues are different than those of the larger communities. We have a different approach, which is instead of paying lobbyists like myself to go do most of the work in Salem. And that's what I am. I am a lobbyist. I, I, I am registered to lobby for all of the SMAC members, but the model is a little bit different. The League of Oregon Cities sends 10 lobbyists into the building every legislative session. And I'd rather see 10 mayors. I'd rather see 10 uh, infrastructure experts. I'd rather see 10 people who live in a small community come talk about what life is like in a small community. So how does this whole thing work, right? It's a very, it's a relatively informal um, organization. You need to know a few things upfront. This is not about fundraising. We are not a PAC. We're not giving money to parties. We're not um, doing anything like that. That makes things a lot more complicated than they need to be to make our points at this point. But there is an intergovernmental agreement between the communities, right? That are members of SMAC. And at this point, that's Sodaville, Brownsville, Sciow, Monroe, Halsey, Harrisburg, Staton, who just voted last week to join, and Stanfield, Oregon, which is up by Hermiston. So, and I know it doesn't make a lot of sense. It's just a phone call that I made and that's how it worked out that way. So we're gonna, we're gonna make our way around the state and expand the membership. But, so there's an intergovernmental agreement between the cities that says, hey, we're all in this together. Okay, and it's not a, it's not a formal uh, anything that anybody needs to be scared about, but you're joining SMAC and you're saying, we're all in this, uh, in this together. We're looking for um, common missions and common circumstances among our members, right? Um, I mentioned that this is not for fundraising. This is an informal association. It's not for PAC activity. Um, we have multiple issues as small communities that we can align on. One of the things that I've found in talking to people that are interested in SMAC, but there hasn't been a um, a real great strategy for bringing those things together and getting pointed um, um, help with them, so to speak, right? Everything results in a piece of legislation that probably won't pass. And then we wait until the next political session and now we've got an election coming up. In fact, there's a, a filing party at Magoo's in Salem to see who's, who's going to be running and who's, who's not going to be running. All of those things change politics session after session after session. So to do this means that you do it and you start and you, and you don't stop, okay? So you work closely with my firm and uh, which is Tate Public Affairs and uh, some of my colleagues, um, identifying group and local priorities that um, are important to small municipalities. I'll give you an example of, of one that just came up during the short legislative session. Um, we have several municipalities that we've spoken with that mentioned that their water treatment system is lagoon water treatment system. And I don't know what Sweet Homes is. Not a lagoon water treatment system. There's challenges with getting certified workers for lagoon water treatment systems because the tests that you have to take to get certified um, have questions on them uh, about systems that you would have no experience on if you ran a lagoon water system. And so it's things like that that don't get a lot of attention paid to them, yet there are 20 to 50 small cities throughout Oregon that are having the same problem, alright? Something like that gets brought to our attention and we start working to set up meetings with DEQ. We start working to set up meetings with, with committee chairs so that we can bring light to these smaller issues that may not get, have light shined on them by the larger advocacy model, if that makes sense. Um, my firm does policy analysis and strategy development for the work that we do uh, with kinds of conversation and help from my um, folks and community members who run cities and who run water departments and who run streets and all of those things. Those are not my areas of expertise. My area of expertise is engaging in the policy system. I do communications and collateral development for the issues that we're working on. We had some fun this uh, last short legislative session with Senate Bill 1576. I don't know if you guys paid attention to 1576, but that was the bill that ultimately provided some additional recreational immunity for small communities that you're familiar with the lawsuit in Newport. There's a woman a couple of years ago who fell on a municipal trail, sued the city and it wasn't covered by insurance. And, and uh, so now we have some language in statute, once the governor signs it, that will protect us from very simple things like people who trip on a walking path, people who fall over on their bicycle when they're riding on a bicycle path, things like that. Um, so we get involved in issues like that and we write the strategy pieces. We write the letters, get signatures from people involved, it's like that. Then we manage our engagement. Um, I was the point of contact for um, city managers and counselors during the session to sign letters and have phone calls and conversations with some other people to help make our points as we went through the session. And strategic planning moving forward, which is kind of the um, the page that, the phase that we're in right now. The traditional association model, I want to bring this, I want to bring a little bit, this a little bit more to light. Um, members help prioritize policy needs. Associations speak on behalf of members. They bring in heavy hitters for testimony. And as we've mentioned, not all priorities get the attention that they need because they don't always rise to the level of the large municipalities. Our model is different, okay? So our members prioritize our policy needs. You tell me and us as a group what it is that we need to be working on and that's what we focus on. Members and myself and my colleagues um, speak to our issues. The, my team engages as appropriate when we can't get experts from communities to engage and testify. One of the things that is really important to the, to the success of this is to know who, know the depth chart really at the city level and know who the person is who understands water at the city and know who the person is that understands safety and understand law enforcement and things like that and bring those people into discussions on behalf of the city um, when it's appropriate. So these were um, some of the things that we looked at um, going into the short session here. Infrastructure, revenues, homelessness, houselessness, TMDL and Measure 110, alright? There were about 270 individual pieces of legislation that dropped during the short session. That's not a ton. Um, the long session, you'd get closer to 3,000 pieces of legislation, right? So we go through those individual bills and think about them and identify the ones that, that make sense for us to follow and identify the ones that don't make sense for us to follow. And then as a group, we prioritize what it is that we're going to work on together. And then from there, develop the strategy for each of the individual pieces of legislation or issues that we're going to work on. So what we're really asking for from the city of Sweet Home is to join SMAC, become the ninth city. Um, I'm about to start a road trip across Oregon. I'm going to hit the northeast in a couple of weeks and then I'm going to hit the coast and stand a liar. Um, we'll have people on the southern Oregon coast and we'll, and we'll have people um, hopefully from across the state, and that's the point. This can't be a Mid Willamette Valley organization, right? If SMAC is going to be successful in our efforts, we're going to have to show that it's the state. It's the state of Oregon. It's not just the Mid Willamette Valley. So it's going to take some road time and we're going to have, we're going to have some fun doing that. But what we really need for you guys to do is help us advocate for the priorities that you tell us are important to you, alright? This can't just be Mayor Coleman and myself. It's got to be Dave too, right? And anybody that has expertise or interest in a particular part of the city can be a very important piece of the discussion when it comes to advocating for fixes and change. This is where my marketing background comes in. This is the kind of fun stuff that I like to do. Um, I'm working currently on all the visibility and branding for the small municipalities advocacy coalition. Um, we've got all kinds of fun things we can do with that word. Um, we can have, we've got T-shirts that we, that say, we're talking SMAC. We have buttons that are, you know, that are things that people wear in the Capitol. How many of you have been in the Capitol on a union day or uh, some other? Yeah, right. And you, okay, so you get what I'm, what I'm, for those of you that haven't, um, it's very easy to tell who's in a union on a union day because they're all wearing exactly the same colors. They're, they're carrying the same flag. They all look the same. It's a show of force. It's a great advocacy effort. It shows how strong you are in the building and we need to be able to do the same thing, even though we're, we're still a little bit small, you know, relatively speaking. Um, we need people to be saying who's SMAC and why should we know who's SMAC is, right? And I need my SMAC members to walk around the Capitol sometimes wearing a button or wearing a T-shirt that says, this is why we're here. Um, and we're going to have fun with it because quite frankly, I, I don't want to do this if it isn't going to be fun. There's, you know, this is marketing. This is, this is selling um, solutions. And the way to stand out is to squeak and be identifiable, right? And make somebody want to pay attention to you. Our success as an organization looks like this. All of our member municipalities engaging in Salem in some way. It's either an email or a phone call or for somebody that can go up and provide testimony or write a letter or whatever that looks like. But every member of SMAC is somehow actively engaged in the process. We're doing very strategic focused policy work that sets the future stage. Right now, I'm talking to members about the list of the things that they wish they could fix, but they can't, right? And then we look at who has, who, where are those like issues across the cities? And we make our coalitions that way and advance the initiatives. So Oregon visibility and branding for SMAC, I just showed you that. Um, and well-informed and well-aligned advocacy partners. There are a lot of people who we are going to want to work with. We're going to work with the League of Oregon Cities. This isn't about not working with the league and other like organizations. They have, they bring a lot of very important things to the table. Um, the league just hasn't proven to be the solution to these small city issues that small cities wish they had been, and that's why we're here. Strategic relationship development. Um, who wants to know who's SMAC is and why? And who do we, and who do we want to um, partner with um, throughout the course of our advocacy efforts? And then policymakers recognizing the resource. When you get a phone call from a legislator saying, I got a bill and I want to know what SMAC thinks about it or I want to know what Sweet Home thinks about this piece of legislation. Um, that, that to me is a really good sign that you're now being brought into the conversation and that's what we're trying to make sure that all of our small cities get. It's the opportunity to, to talk and be engaged. So that's the pricing model uh, for SMAC. And I looked at your population as I came into town. Is it 99?
98, 25 on the side.
92. Tried to make this as affordable as possible for as many small communities to join as we can. We have members from 300, Sodaville is 330 uh, you know, relation. And uh, our range, quite frankly, will probably be, you can, you can think of Lebanon as kind of the top end of what the size of a small municipality is. Came to that conclusion by simply asking some of the small towns, what's a big town, right? And the resource change seems to happen at 20, 25, $30,000. They don't feel the pain quite the same way that we do. Real quickly, this is the strategic timeline that we had for SMAC. Uh, when we started this in June, we did a lot of education and training for the initial members. Then we of course had the 2024 short session. We're in the middle of the debrief right now and then um, early spring is policy package development for 2025. We're going to take um, small municipality issues to the Capitol in 2025 during the long session. And right now, we're developing those, figuring out what we can coalesce around, who has common needs and if those common needs all point to the same thing or not. And so that's what we're working on right now is getting ready to bring the things and the issues and concerns that you have and that the rest of our members have to the legislature in 25. Next steps, continuing with the branding, earned media. I've gotten three phone calls from newspapers that want the scoop on SMAC and we're just about ready to give it to them, I think, at some point. Um, building out the web presence that we have, continuing to build out of communications and the information and structure that we have for how we share information. And then myself hitting the road, building the coalition with the help of our members who are also making phone calls and saying, please come join SMAC, so. And that's me. The end, and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has about what we're trying to do here.
Counselors, do you have any questions for Sean regarding SMAC?
Well, because frankly, some cities can't afford um, right? Basic relation resources or our city of Sodaville can't afford $425 a month. So we put a price relative to cities. Well, it's just not something that we considered, so.
Counselor Sanchez, did you have a comment?
I was trying, thank you. I was trying to, did you say when you founded this um, SMAC?
Yeah, about June of last year.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I, so League of Oregon City does a lot of things.
Thanks.
Um, and I think they push a lot of things, whether we like them or we don't. Um, are you going to be something similar to that or completely different?
Well, I think, I'll go with different. I won't say completely different because we're all going to be working on some of the same issues together. But again, the difference in the model between the league is they send a bunch of lobbyists into the building to do the work, right? And what we're trying to do is send city experts into the building to do the work and get small municipalities to engage on their own behalf instead of just relying on larger organizations to do so. That's the big, that's the big difference. Does that make sense?
So for instance, if I, if I may, I think if we had, um, if there was legislation at the Capitol regarding transportation and within our council and our city officials, we know that we have an expert on transportation. Counselor Sanchez.
She's got a truck.
But she, but because of her professional experience, that she would be able to speak into that. So then she would join other SMAC members to address transportation issue or legislation at the Capitol.
Yes, potentially. Um, thank you for the question. And it's not, it's not always, you know, run up to Salem and, and, and give a speech or provide testimony. Without a tenant, send an email. That I've we recognize everybody's busy um, and nobody, their date, let alone their, as a city councillor or a mayor to go run up to Salem at a moment's notice and testify. We try to make it easy for you, but we do need your name on some letters and your names on some emails and things like that, if it's going to work, so.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I really wasn't through, uh, but I, I don't have another question. I, I think this sounds like a pretty good deal. I'm just kidding.
Fair enough.
But now I understand that you guys are friends, you know each other?
We, I work at the Capitol.
This is happening?
No. She's not, she's not, she's not the reason that it's happening. Now, I've known the mayor for, I don't know, four years or so.
Four years.
We were working with Commissioner Springer.
Springer, yep, yep.
In the, in the Capitol, so.
Madam Mayor, do we need to make a decision today? Are we going to let that go for another?
We'll, we'll discuss and uh,
Okay, okay.
For the good of the order, if we want to add it to the agenda to have a vote on. Um, but I know that counselors have mentioned, I've heard counselors say that they struggle with the representation that LOC has sometimes provided regarding issues that are important to our community. So that's why I was willing to bring this before you all was because this would be a better representation for rural communities, so. Yeah, now LOC still provides us with C I, CIS and other um, insurance and stuff like that. There's other things that we want to keep, but um, this is just a different avenue and a different approach.
There will be things that we work with the LOC on. There will be things that I, I want them to help us pitch and they may want us to help pitch at some point. It's, you know, it's not as though they don't do some advocacy for small municipalities. It's just that the small municipalities that are coalescing around this idea need more help than they're getting.
Correct.
Yep.
Do you move that back?
Oh, yeah.
So we're in the 525?
The 450.
You're in the 450.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Any further questions?
No further questions from counsel at this time. So thank you so much for your time.
My pleasure.
Appreciate it. Recognition of visitors and hearing petitions. Is there any other visitors that want to come forward at this time? No. Moving on to old business, request for council action easement agreement with Alirica Networks.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, shout out to Stanfield. Just had to say that. I don't think I've heard that name in a meeting in a while. Um, so we met uh, last week or last month, this item was brought before you. Uh, Alirica is um, has, you previously approved a franchise agreement for them to provide fiber to the home uh, internet connectivity in Sweet Home. They have requested an easement on city property for their um, telecommunications equipment. This is equipment that could not, cannot fit within um, within the, the city right of way. Uh, right now, they have approval for uh, their lines to go in the city right of way, but this equipment would have to go uh, someplace else. Um, they are requesting a 20 by 20, a 20 foot by 20 foot area and they've identified an area of city hall, of our old city hall that would fit their needs quite well. Uh, when we spoke about it uh, last month, there was some concern about the location um, of that easement and uh, especially when it comes to the uh, future development possibilities of that property. And the direction was to uh, bring this back at a later time and with more information from Alirica on uh, why specifically that area and what other possibilities there could be. Uh, I have communicated with Alirica on this topic and the information I have received, and there is an Alirica representative uh, present tonight that I'll invite up in a moment. Um, and the, the information I've received is that because of their desire to have um, some redundancy in their system, they are needing a site that has good reception for their existing uh, over the air um, uh, internet uh, services. And so i- if you're not aware of how those work, they have towers uh, outside of the city that have transmitters on the top and anyone getting service from them uh, can have an antenna on their house that has a line of sight uh, connection to that tower. Because it requires a line of sight, it's not, not anywhere can um, can receive that signal. It has to be specific location. And their studies have shown that this particular area of the site um, works for that connectivity and other areas would not. And so uh, that's the word I've received from them and I would invite up uh, Madison to talk a little bit more about that.
Madison, just name an address for the record, please, thanks. And push the button to make sure that mic's on. Perfect.
Hello.
Yeah.
Hi, good evening, Madison Yoc, uh, 364 North 7th Street, Blomuth, Oregon. Um, and Blair
And Blair, was there a slide deck?
Oh, shoot. Yes.
That had some imaging in there that might be helpful. With explaining and I'm sorry, we weren't able to attend the last meeting, but thanks for
Keep talking.
The opportunity to, to be here this evening. So we appreciate it very much. Yeah, maybe we'll wait. Sorry for that to be booted up.
I apologize. That is my, that is entirely my fault. Got lost in my inbox.
Problem. But I mean, Blair summed it up really well. The, the reason for the proposed location is because the, because of the redundancy factor. So if a line, a fiber line were to be damaged or a pole were to go down or, you know, breakage in the line, then Alirica standard is to have redundancy. So that means that if, if a line goes down, then, then the communication is transferred over the air through, through wireless. So, so that minimizes or eliminates hopefully any customer impact associated with a damaged line. So I know, I think one of the visit, one of the first visits when I came out to speak with Blair, there had been a pole that had come down outside of this building and and so, and then that happens. And so and so again, that, that's the, the main reason why this is so important for our network is, is having that redundancy piece in case of that event. So our engineers, Chase was out here with me one evening. I know he's our fiber engineer. He, he and some others from our team, our infrastructure team have come out and done quite a bit of analysis on different locations and, and they use, they use equipment to do signal checking, to communicate with the tower. And as Blair said, that, that location is really ideal and ensuring proper connectivity in the event that we need that redundancy. And there's, are you, oh, should I advance?
No, I can.
Oh, okay. Okay, there. That's perfect. And so, so just a little bit of breakdown around the rationale for, for choosing that. Again, this is done with, with line of sight. So it really has to see, see the tower in order to ensure that there's proper connectivity. And, and that's what ultimately determined that location. And then if you want to advance Blair, if you don't mind, it, it does appear that there was a structure there at some point where, where we're proposing to have that cabinet. I'm sure you're very aware of that. If you don't mind advancing. We were just, we just have some, some Google Earth images to just, to show exactly where we were hoping. So I'm sure you're, you're very well aware of that area.
Yeah, that's our old city council chambers.
Yeah. And then if you, yeah, advanced. So yeah, that's just, that's just where the confirmed line of sight is located. So and then I don't know if you've already been, I'm sure you've already reviewed the easement application or that was already distributed maybe or
It's in the packet.
Okay, perfect. And then, yeah, that, that the twenty by twenty space for the, for the cabinet, the technology is what we're requesting for. And then, and then it would, it would be a fenced off area with privacy flats. Is what we would need for that technology equipment. And then. So that would be where we would. So that is another location that's ideally where we would drill underground to connect from, from the cabinet. We would drill underground there under the right away.
Are you, are you talking about the other blue square?
Yeah.
That's at the Hope Center.
Yeah.
It's not city property.
Yeah. And, and answered a question, yes, that is another confirmed location, but the, the main one that we're, we've requested in the easement is, is the primary ideal location. But we have been working on identifying other solutions as well. And yeah, just, just more information on, on the area. I think, I think that was it for the effect. Yeah. So yeah, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions or write any further information if that's helpful. I, I was able to go back and listen to the last meeting online and I, I know there were some questions around maybe relocating to another portion of the parking lot. I don't know if that's still of interest, but again, it's, it's, it's because of that line of sight because it's so precise. Using the equipment to speak exactly to the tower, it'd be the same. You know, if somebody, if a technician came out to your house and was tweaking the antenna on your house to speak to the tower, it has to be directly in alignment so that it communicates. So it's, it's the same general idea. But yeah, are there any questions or anything I can help clarify?
Any questions of councillors?
I have some questions.
Sure.
So the reason there was a building there was because council chambers needed to be there when we were using that building. We're no longer using that building and it hasn't been solidified what will occur there in the future. And so to have this box at that site in the middle of the lot is not ideal.
Sure.
And I'm really concerned about that. I, I do understand line of sight. But if the city old city hall wasn't there, is that still going to be the ideal place? And is there other ideal places in the community that would work as well? I'm, I'm really concerned about that, but also what happens to the line of sight when you move it to the corner of the lots, right? So I'm really uncomfortable with putting a twenty by twenty building, building with a fence around it, right in the middle there. If that's not absolutely necessary.
Sure.
So.
Okay, absolutely.
Madam Mayor, if I may. So if a, if a fiber gets broken, what happens?
So, well, we would send a technician out to repair it right, right away. But if there was ultimate failure, then, then all the communication ideally switches quickly over to that redundant pathway.
Yeah, well, it's not easy to fix. I've done that before and it's not easy. It's in, I, I don't know if people realize how, how much you can put in one fiber. It's a lot.
Yeah.
And it could, it could, it could mess up a lot of people.
Absolutely.
A lot of people.
Yeah.
And so that would be a concern for me. And I, I have done that with my, with fiber before. And not a lot, thank goodness. But so, all right, so it goes so far. How far will it go from that unit? How, how far will your signal go from that unit?
From the cabinet?
A mile, ten miles, twenty miles?
Just to clarify, the, the fiber service would, would go to this site and then go out throughout the city. There would also be a fiber connection underground to, to a main fiber trunk line. The line of sight is a redundancy aspect. And so like you said, with that fiber line being potentially damaged, having a line of sight connection into their, the rest of their system serves as a, as a safety mechanism, as a, as a you know, just in case kind of situation.
Yeah, to prevent failures.
That's a good point.
Yeah. So that's, that's a standard and network for Alirica. That's a, that's a network standard to ensure that there's no, no impact on customers or businesses experiencing a loss.
Well, my last question is how far will that go from that unit that you have on Twelfth Avenue? How far will it go? Will it go to Cascadia?
Um, no, I, I don't know the exact distance of the tower, maybe ten miles. Yeah, it'll speak directly to, it'll speak directly to the tower. Yeah.
And I, I tell you, it's, it's amazing stuff.
Yeah.
It is absolutely amazing stuff.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm glad you're doing it.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So you had spoke into the conversation that you guys were actively seeking additional locations. And so how long is that process going to take? And have you had any successful prospects or what's that process look like?
Yeah, I, you know, I think we are waiting ultimately to see what your decision was ultimately because of, because it is the ideal site, because it is the strongest signal and, and, you know, obviously fully respect your opinions and, and your position on, on that. But so, so we're actively looking at other solutions because ultimately we want to make sure that we're providing service to customers as soon as possible. So the quicker we can identify that cabinet location, then the sooner we can expedite the project and start connecting people. I know we had spoken maybe a month ago or so around, you know, hopefully getting folks connected this summer. And so, so we haven't given up on identifying other locations, but there's certainly not one as good as this. So there would be some maybe more, more utility easements or maybe some more things that we would have to go through for us some other locations. I think we had looked at the, the fire station a little bit and then obviously Hope Inc. There, but they're not, they're not quite as, as ideal. And so it might take a little bit more effort to, to make those things happen and might potentially delay things a little bit, but we're, we certainly haven't given up on looking at other locations if this, if this doesn't work.
That was the second question that I had with that. Is it going to prohibit you guys from coming into town if you can't find another ideal location and that is the only one that you have? I would like to know that also.
Yeah. An answer to your question, if we weren't able to identify another location, then yes, absolutely. Because we have to have, we have to have that redundancy factor. Just to ensure that, that nothing bad happens. But I, you know, certainly we'll, we'll pursue finding, finding another solution. It just might be more difficult and it might take a little bit more time.
You, you alluded to one point I was getting ready to bring up about the fire department. That's less than a hundred feet. There's two hundred feet away from where you're proposing. There's a lot open around there. I'm still not understanding why you can't use that property.
Yeah, it's just sure that the testing came out to be there, but it's not, it's not as an ideal location for the signal strength is, is the
I'm still scratching my head. Less than a hundred feet.
I know.
I can't see a signal string less than a hundred.
Yeah, I know.
I see there's a couple of spots on the fire department property that I don't understand what the difference would be.
Yeah. I, I'm, yeah, unfortunately I'm not the, the technician that's out there, but it does have to be very precise, the way that it looks directly at the tower in order to communicate the signal. And so it's not, you know, our, our team would figure out a solution. I'm, I'm sure of it. It's just, this is the ideal, ideal solution. And that's just why we're here.
Madam Mayor, if I may. If you look at all these towers for Verizon and all those, they just don't pick a spot somewhere. They go through a lot of time to figure out where that thing's got to be. Otherwise you won't have a, a signal. It's just the way it is. So
Yeah.
You gotta take the best sign you can get, in my opinion.
Yeah.
And that might be where it is. I don't know, but.
Yeah, we, we always been out a couple of times at it and that, that is the best identified, but.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I, I, I just wanted to clarify right now that the area that we're talking about was previously the annexed building was on it. Now that that building has been removed, I mean, there is a, there is a driveway off of Kalmaia that is, is used, but previous to the building be removed, a different driveway was used all the time. I just wanted to make sure that there was an understanding that this does not impact access into the site or into the parking lot. Because there are other avenues, there are other options there.
And my concern is it impacts future use of that site. And if there was a business sitting right there where you're talking about, I don't think that that would be the only site we're looking at. I think that it looks like an empty parking lot right now. And so I say, yeah, let's go for it. But we don't know if that is what we're going to do with that building. What, you know, we've had some conversations, but this is right in the middle of that block. It's not up in the corner by, you know, we've got a fence right there by the, the station. And the tower, it shouldn't affect it that much. You're saying it's across the street. There's one. I'm thinking if it's got that big of a radius. I don't know. I just don't feel like I've gotten the answers today about that. That if, is this it or was this the ideal? And there's really other ideals, but this is the ideal because the way the lot looks right now. And so I'm kind of, I'm concerned about that.
Sure.
And so and I don't know. That whole lot could be developed in something amazing for our community and we need to be thinking five years, 10 years, 20 years down the road. And I, I think it's, it's not good planning and management of that space. So just was thinking, I I, I don't think I have changed my feelings about that from the last meeting we had this conversation. Because I have no understanding of why where the old fire hall sat over there behind the buildings isn't better or in the corner or you know, I'm just not, I'm not really sure about this.
I'm sorry if I'm doing a poor job of explaining that. It's really just the technical, the way that it's directed.
I think it's just the information you were given, you know, and so.
And I know you can't answer a lot of these questions you're representing.
Yeah.
It's, I'm still, I see, I know a couple of spots on the fire department grounds. It's less than a hundred feet away and I'm still not understanding why. You know, that's not making any sense to me because it's less than a hundred feet away.
Yeah. I wish I, I couldn't. Yeah, I don't know how to articulate it. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah. I, I can go back to the map that if you want to show them that maybe is. So this, this is what was provided, I guess. The, my question to you, Madison, would be, are the green areas? These dark blue are the, are seen as the, the preferred. Are the green areas possibilities for access also, or is it that they are not as much or they're not as reliable of a signal?
Yeah. Yeah. So it's a signal strength is, is what is the concern.
In other words, standing in those blue boxes, you get five bars on your cell phone. If you are moving away from there, you're getting three, two, maybe none.
It diminishes.
It diminishes the strength of the signal of
Yeah.
What, from their tower.
Yeah. And it's the same, when I had a technician antenna on my home, they, they could, it, it wouldn't have worked if they had it on a different corner of my house because it wouldn't see the tower properly because it's fixed wireless. So it had to be on that exact corner of the home or else my signal wouldn't have been as strong. So that, that's really, it's the signal strength and it's the direction of it. The way, the way that it's communicating with the, with the tower. So it's
This is, this is an Alirica owned tower outside of town.
Yeah.
That it's trying to get a line of sight to. So this is not about broadcasting any, any signal to anywhere, to any customers over the air. This is about an over the air signal line of sight to your
Infrastructure, just
For, for that redundancy.
Yeah, to, to ensure a reliable network in case that something failed. Yeah.
Any further questions from councillors?
Is that thing twenty by twenty?
The, the fence, the fence space is to, to house the equipment. And, and I'm sure we could, we, we could figure out a way to, to make it a little bit smaller, but there's, there would be a shelter there that would keep everything weatherproof. Yeah.
No further questions? Need direction from council?
Oh, can I make a motion to approve the easement agreement as proposed, which is option two?
Okay, we have a motion on the table.
Do you have a second?
No second yet.
No, I'll do that. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Cecily?
Counselor Sanchez?
No.
Counselor Thorstad? Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller?
No.
Mayor Coleman?
No.
Counselor Gurley?
No.
Counselor Richards?
Let the record show that we have five no's and two yeses to move on with this. Thank you.
Thank you for consideration. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda. We have information only in there. That's been postponed. The next item is new business information only staff report on system development charges assessed on accessory dwelling units.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the last council meeting, as you recall, a citizen came forward and talked about their efforts to develop a, an ADU on, on a property. ADU stands for accessory dwelling unit. These are often known as granny pods or in-law cottages, or there's lots of different names. Essentially, it's a smaller home on the same lot as a larger home. ADUs have been, have gotten more attention recently as Oregon has sought to get more housing into our communities and the state has mandated the ADUs be permitted anywhere where a single family home is allowed to be built. Prior to that effort by the state, the city of Sweet Home already had allowed for ADUs to be constructed. And in the time since we have modified our code to make it easier, it used to be you were limited to eight hundred and sixty-seven square feet. Rather strange number, but that was what the limit was. And now it's more a limit that is based on the size of the single family home that's already on the property. ADUs can be up to, I believe, seventy-five percent of that footprint. In this case, the resident is requesting, is stated that they want to build a four hundred square foot ADU. This is not a problem. This is not something that is not allowed. This is perfectly allowed by our code. This is not a problem. This is not something that is not allowed. This is perfectly allowed by our code. The issues that, uh, the, the resident is coming into is that under our, uh, system development charges uh, in our methodology, there is no distinction between a, uh, the size of a, of a home and the, um, and that the system development charge that they, that you would pay for that home. And because it is an additional dwelling unit on the property, it is, uh, is charged. Uh, those charges amount to the same as an additional dwelling unit on any property. Which, um, currently our SDCs are approximately fifteen thousand for a single family home. And so that would, that's, there's not any, um, in our current code and with our SDC methodology as it stands, there is no leeway for staff to go any lower than that. It is, it is the law in, in Sweet Home. So the question is, we, we were asked to, uh, do some research on what is typical and, um, what other places are doing. Uh, the resident, uh, brought a bunch of information on, uh, how these are discounted in some cities and that is true. Um, we did not, in the last two weeks, we've, we're not able to do an exhaustive accounting of, uh, what cities in Oregon do. But we tried to get as much of a baseline of what's typical in Lynn County and with cities our size. But we threw in some other cities as well to provide some context. So, uh, first off, in Lynn County, uh, Brownsville doesn't have any exemption, doesn't have any discount. Uh, Lebanon has an exemption or does not have an exemption, but not long ago, they passed a, um, a, a ordinance that discounts, uh, a, an ADU by forty percent. So a, an ADU pays, um, sixty percent of the charges that a single family home would, would pay. Um, their, their, uh, their SDC for a single family home is seventeen thousand, three hundred. And an SDC for an ADU then would be approximately ten thousand, three hundred and eighty. Albany has a entirely different system development charge free, a fee structure than ours. Theirs, uh, has a lot more of a basis for the square footage of the structure. And so the way theirs is written, um, ADUs are, uh, if a four hundred square foot ADU would pay less because their charges are already assessed, uh, assessed based on the square footage of the building that's being built. Um, right now, a, a four hundred square foot building, uh, the SDC in Albany would be nine thousand, five hundred and five dollars. Um, other areas further out, um, the city of Salem, uh, has exempted ADUs. However, that has a sunset clause in their ordinance. And so that exemption goes away on June thirtieth of this year. We don't have any information on any other discount that they offer that would remain in effect. Um, the city of Medford, uh, it's a little bit tricky trying to, to nail them down because their SDC is charged by multiple agencies, not just the city, uh, because they have a separate water district and, uh, and, um, wastewater district, then the, the city handles the parks. It's, it's kind of a mess. So depending on what you look at, their discount is twenty-five to fifty percent. Um, Corvallis is, uh, is similar where they discount the parks SDC and then all the rest of the system development charges are based on usage. And so they, they naturally, uh, fluctuate depending on the size of the property. Um, Portland has, uh, flat out exempted, uh, ADUs. However, um, neither the ADU nor the primary home may be rented for a period of ten years after construction of that ADU. And so there is a, I don't know how they enforce that. Uh, it sounds like a pain, but they, they have, uh, they basically said, we don't want to. Um, we, we don't want to make this be a, an avenue for, uh, landlords to increase the density of a, of a rental property. Um, we want this to be something that families can use and, and owner occupied, uh, properties can use. So that's, that's kind of their, their policy decision. Um, and so that's, that's essentially what, um, oh, uh, Oregon City, uh, we found they, they don't have an exemption, but they discount them forty percent. However, it's important to recognize really what kind of charges we're talking about because Oregon City's typical system development charge for a single family home is forty thousand dollars. And so their ADU is, uh, discount, when it's discounted, that brings their ADU down to twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. So even discounted, their ADU is far higher than our, than our SDC for, um, for any single family home in, in Sweet Home. Um, so the, the takeaway for you from this, uh, from this report, and again, this is information only and we were happy to take any direction that you would like. Um, there are options, um, there are policy matters to be considered when it comes to ADUs. Uh, the, the main question is, is how much, uh, we allow them already. The question is, how much do we want to promote them? And how much do we think is, is justifiable when it comes to, um, to what kind of treatment they get? Right now, our SDCs are assessed, um, because whatever we don't charge in SDCs eventually goes to the ratepayers. And so the, the, the mentality behind SDCs is that the initial development should pay for its fair share. Um, so that, uh, those who are already in town aren't paying that extra amount on their water bill. Or are there, I should, sorry, forgive me, not a water bill, city utility bill. Cause it includes all of those services. And so whatever we discount for any particular type of housing, um, is going to have to be made up elsewhere, uh, from other sources. Um, some cities have made the policy decision to do that and some have decided not to. Um, that is certainly, uh, within your power. Uh, our current SDC methodology, um, is where this, where our, our, our current rates come from. It's based on, um, on a, a single family home as being kind of the, the, the default, uh, setting. I suppose you could call it. And so if we were to try to move towards something that is more on, based on a square footage, it really changes our entire methodology and would require a significant amount of work to, to, to change that and have that be adopted. Um, but there are also other options like what Lebanon did with simply, um, uh, putting in an ordinance that is flat out discounted. Uh, they, that's kind of the easier route. So I'm happy to take any questions that you have. It's not the easiest topic and so I understand, um, uh, there, there can be a lot of confusion in this and there's also not a lot of, uh, consistency from city to city. This is, uh, this is government statute, but state statute simply says you have to have a methodology and there are certain things that it can be set, spent on. It does end. Better way of doing that methodology. There are a lot of options there and therefore comparing one city to another is, uh, is extremely difficult to get an apples to apples comparison. Um, not to mention that they all have different utility rates and different needs when it comes to infrastructure.
It's kind of funny is within my, just within the city block I live on, there's three ADUs. So they must be grandfathered because back in the day.
Well, it, yeah, if they were built a number of years ago, then they probably were built without any SDCs paid at all.
But my biggest concern is we really shouldn't be sending the president that would come back and buy this down. I, I don't think we need to be doing this personally discounts or setting something that, that. He sent a president that's going to come back and buy this in the end, so.
I do have a concern however, that you can do it for half as much money in Albany. And you can do it for considerably less in Lebanon. And, um, I think we need to revisit this system that we have overall. It seems to be an undue burden on being able to put, um, a mother-in-law's cottage or a canning kitchen off the house, which is something that is not unusual for our country to be doing. And so I just feel like there's, it needs to be revisited on a larger scale at least.
Any other comments, questions, councilors?
To rebuttal that, I think Albany and Lebanon have more of a population of people splitting the bill. We do have expensive foundation that we need to pay for and some. I think this, uh, goes to, towards that. Right, correct?
Yeah.
So Madam Mayor, um, if I may, so I've always been opposed to outrageous SDCs. I think they're a barrier to job creation and homeownership. I think that because Sweet Home has declared a state of emergency for homelessness, that we need to reduce barriers, reduce regulations and reduce fees to allow people to house more people. It doesn't make sense to me to keep them as expensive as they are when we have declared a homeless state of emergency. That's how I feel.
I agree with that.
Um, just keep in mind that if we move forward with making discounts, as staff has shared, um, that one, this, the way that they're structured, if we, uh, set it up differently, according to square footage, that will change, we'd have to review all of our SDCs. Number two is if we do a discount on SDCs, um, the rest of the ratepayers do have to make up for the cost. Um, especially regarding our wastewater facility, our water distribution plant, um, those things that need to be covered, the expenses of those. So, um, the purpose of SDCs is cover the expenses of all of those things that are impacted by new additions and new homes.
We had that discussion quite a while back, if you guys recall, about when we structured the SDCs. So if the council feels our SDCs are too high, then maybe we need as a council to revisit our SDCs. But I, I would be cautious about discounts and Senate presidents on discounts.
May I add one point of clarification? If there is going to be a housing development for low income or for homeless, SDCs are typically waived. So that's, so just keep that in mind as well, please. Thanks.
I was just going to confirm that yes, our ordinance has an exemption for low income housing. Um, it, it's also important to note that the, this, when we're talking about ADUs, um, I'm talking about the, what the SDC's charge is for ADUs and there are lower prices certainly for ADUs in other communities. However, overall, our SDCs are significantly lower than anyone in the, frankly, in the state. Uh, so we are, it is not true to say that we are, are outsized on our, the amount that we charge for SDCs. That statement would be limited to when it comes to ADUs compared to some, some cities that do have discounts.
Madam Mayor, if I may, uh, when we had this big, long discussion about SDCs, it was, we were at eighteen hundred dollars, I think is what it was. And if you see what, what the SDCs that we, uh, raised has done, I'll just use the public works. They, I mean, the, the wastewater and water pump, it's, it's a significant difference for us. You know, and you're absolutely right. If you don't do the SDCs, somebody's going to pay for it. And that's just, that's the way it is and, uh, I, I don't know, I don't know how else to say that because it's, it's, uh, it, it's covered like four or five different places in the city. You know, the parks, the water and the waste and all that. It's, it's all helped a lot on those, on those situations.
One of the tasks of our, uh, city government and the city council is to make sure that we have infrastructure that's working. And, um, I'm not against the possibility of discussing, um, uh, if we need to revisit SDCs. Uh, but we just need to keep in mind that because of some of the, because we didn't have SDCs established in the past or very reasonable ones, um, a lot of our infrastructure is in bad disrepair. And that's why we increased them is to make sure we could fix the infrastructure that's there and provide for the whole community. And when people add buildings to our community, that means they're adding weight and, um, usage on our infrastructure. So that's why we have SDCs in place.
Madam Mayor, may I say one more thing? Um, if affordable housing is an issue and we have a lack of affordable housing, then we have to make it affordable to build so people can afford the housing to move into. If we have it so unaffordable to where we don't have people purchasing the permits or whatever they need to pay the SDCs, then we're not going to have anybody coming in and even helping us with that infrastructure. So if it were me for the ADUs, I would at least like to have an exemption for a temporary amount of time or until we get out of the homelessness state of emergency and, and see what else we could do about the other things. But the ADUs are critical to making sure that people can have somewhere with a roof over their head on their own family's property, so.
So I have a question for Blair real quick, but, um, I honestly would like to see if there's some way that we could investigate a pathway to being able to tie in something less than four hundred square foot or three fifty into the existing, um, infrastructure that we have on the original properties when that's available. And it would take that rather than create a whole nother line because this ends up being more than what it costs to build the structure. And if that's a possibility, but I'd like to revisit what you said about low income housing. And does that help with this particular type of situation?
Uh, it, it does not. Uh, low income housing, the, the exemptions for low income housing are specifically talking about, um, housing developments that have benefited from various property tax exemptions, um, through the state or the federal government. Um, and, or, or tax credits and things that, um, that those governments offer for, uh, housing that is limited, uh, in, in cost and in rent when it comes to like, uh, a lot of those. An affordable housing complex might have some rules in place to prevent, to, to make it, uh, that it's mandated that it can't be more than thirty percent of the, um, of the tenants', uh, income going to rent and, and so forth. So for an individual property owner to develop their property, um, they would not be able to qualify, uh, for that because they're simply, uh, they're a homeowner and they're not getting the, the, they're not eligible for the kind of tax credits that the federal government gives out for those kinds of programs. Um, so the, the other issue that you brought up, I believe, is when it comes to the connection to our utility systems. Um, i- if an ADU is taking off of the house, for example, instead of making a new connection to, uh, to the city's services in the street, you know, for, this is purely talking about water and wastewater and, uh, to a degree stormwater. Um, you could argue that there is a slightly less impact, but the, the problem is, is that the impact on those systems comes from the people inside the units, not, um, not the units themselves. And the, unfortunately, the avenues that are available to us to charge are, are based on things like the number of fixtures in a home or in a, in a business and so forth. Um, the other thing I, I just want to mention is that typically SDCs, uh, this is an unusual situation. We don't often have a property owner, um, building another unit on their own property that they live in. Usually, uh, most of the development in the city comes from, uh, builders who are, uh, have purchased a property and have divided it, partitioned it and are adding units. And they're either going to sell them off separately or they're going to keep them as rental properties. And so the, there, there's a different profit motive. It's not, we, we don't see very many, uh, applications from folks that are, um, owner occupied improvements on, on, when it comes to adding dwelling units to a lot. And so what that means for SDCs is that typically the, the impact on the SDC, the, the, the impact of the SDC is felt by the developer. The, um, when it comes to the cost of housing for a person buying a home or a person renting a home, that is pretty much a market driven thing. It's, it's entirely dependent on what is the supply of housing in the area and what, and, and what are people asking, you know, charging rent for those places? And then finding a, a home that meets the, the budget for that particular person. When the SDC is charged and the developer pays it, um, it doesn't matter. The developer doesn't get to say, yeah, I'm going to add that SDC to the cost of my house. Um, and, and then I'll, I'm just going to pass it on. The only way that that actually gets passed on is if the housing market is so awful that there's no supply at all. But if there is a supply of housing, which in, in, with the housing we're talking about, there is a supply of this housing and the biggest downer on it is interest rates. Um, that is, it results in the SDC being eaten by the developer more. And that's not to say that I'm in favor of penalizing developers because I'm the first one to say, I want more developers coming to town. I want them to build. Um, that's the economic developer part of me saying, yes, we, we need this housing and that means more customers coming into our city. Um, but it's just important to keep in mind, where is the impact of this SDC felt? And it's, it's not felt by the person purchasing the home or the person renting the home. It's felt by the person who is, uh, is developing. That's, I, I'll, the caveat I'll say is that's more often than not. You can definitely find situations where it's different than that. This particular one would be a different situation, but it is, it is not a common situation. So that doesn't mean we can't do anything about it. That's certainly within your purview. I'm just saying it, it gives you an opportunity to narrowly focus whatever change you want to make so that there is less of an impact on the ratepayers.
So staff, we have this information only that's been presented to us. What do you need from council regarding this matter? And would it, would it be best to have a workshop on this or would it just be best to discuss further details of how you would, how we would like it changed? Because then, but it's not on the agenda for a vote.
So it's not on the agenda for a vote. That's absolutely correct. So it's really council's time to decide if you wanted to come back to council for a vote, if you want to have a workshop, if you want to discuss it further, if you want to just put it to rest. So that's the opportunity right now for council to have. So you can either go ahead and make a motion or discuss it, or you can discuss it during, for the good of the order later on. Or you can choose to table it and we can look at future opportunities for workshops or so forth.
Yes.
The only thing I would add is that there had been some comments made about SDCs in general and comments made about ADUs. And so it's important for staff to know, are you wanting to look at SDCs overall as well as ADUs? Or do you want to, if, if you want to look at any options, do you want to narrow, to focus those simply on the impact of our SDCs on accessory dwelling units?
So as a council, we have a question to us, but would we be interested, and I'm going to hone in the question more, on owner occupied ADU adjustments or are we talking about SDCs in general?
For myself, I don't know about the rest of the council, I'm really interested in just the owner occupied dwelling. That, the ability, what, what flexibility, what can we do to help people out? Because we have an aging population and we really do need to make this affordable. And what, what creative ways can we make this happen without putting a burden on the taxpayers?
So, so far here, owner occupied ADU possible adjustment.
Can I clarify one thing on that? When it's an ADU, in order for it to be owner occupied, the owner of the property would have to move out of the primary home into the ADU. I think what you're actually asking for is the primary property is owner occupied and the ADU is not rented out?
Correct.
Okay.
Counselor, or sorry, Potomahler?
Well, I, I wouldn't mind that. We could revisit it. I, I just want to caution that maybe look at possibly discounts towards ADU. But we need to look at it very carefully to make sure that we're not sending a president that's going to come back and haunt us later on. Especially from our infrastructure needs.
Correct. Counselor Thorstedt.
Think we can revisit it.
Do you want to know?
I know, I think I know, but I'd like it on record.
I, I'm personally a fan of reducing cost to build more. I hear what the council is saying that it could potentially harm. But I do know that we need places for people to live. And so I personally would like to revisit SDCs, but I'm okay with revisiting something for the ADUs for family members.
I, I don't want to mess with the SDCs. I think that we, we need to keep that, that fund going. I don't know, Kelsey, are we, are we coming close to another raise?
For the SDCs?
At, I'll let Director Larson speak to this, but at this point, we are just at a inflation increase.
Yeah, I can confirm that. Last July first was when we reached the target. The target was fifteen thousand for a single family home. That we, we ramped up to that over a period of three years. And so any increases from now on, barring any action by the council, any increases from now on are strictly based on inflation, which is measured by the Seattle builders. And it's a, it's a, it's a measure, it's a, it's based on construction costs.
Well, I think that if, if we, if we let someone get a discount on the SDCs, then what's going to happen next? You know what's going to happen next. Because the next person's going to want to, yeah, they're going to want the same thing. And then, and I can tell you right now, the SDCs have not helped, have, have not hurt our things built in Sweet Home with all the places that have been built. That's right. And there's one down on Long Street. There's another one on, they're just, there's a lot of them and it does not hurt the S, by the SDCs, in my opinion. So I, I want to keep the SDCs where they are. And whatever we get on the next thing and talk about, that's fine with me too. So you know where I stand, so.
Staff, it sounds like we have a consensus to bring back specifically a possible discount for ADUs. Those by primary, who, yeah, not rentals, whatever you want to say. You know what I meant. But also it sounds like there's some counselors who would prefer not to have any change. So maybe when you come back, you can have options available that represent both of the, what we're here.
I think we can definitely structure it in that way.
Okay. Thank you for this report and for bringing it back.
So just to clarify, we're not planning on doing a workshop. We're just bringing this back as an agenda item.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you all counselors for speaking into that. I thought that was a good discussion. Request for council action, City Council FY twenty twenty four, twenty five goals.
All right. Well, we had a fantastic goal setting workshop. And we are bringing forward the goals for the council. So I'm going to read council's vision statement very quickly beforehand while the rest of the goals are pulled up. So we, as city council, have been entrusted to make decisions that do the most good for the most people for the longest period of time to enhance the quality of life for our community. One, we aspire to make Sweet Home a community people find desirable to live in. Two, we aspire to be an effective and efficient local government. Three, we aspire to provide viable and sustainable infrastructure. Four, we aspire to provide viable and sustainable essential services. And five, we aspire to create an economically strong environment in which businesses prosper. So to that effect, we ended up with a, scroll down a little more. No, no, that's up. So that you're all the way in there because it'll up it. So, okay.
Go to the top.
Exactly. All right. So, um, we'll start with infrastructure and that was where the majority of, of the requests and goals came in. So that ended up being an emergency generator for water treatment plants. So we're going to be focusing on trying to get grant funding for that. Eighth Avenue Water Main Replacement Funding, that's also going to require grant funding. So we're going to work on that as well. Pleasant Valley Road Investigation with ODOT. We'll be working with ODOT on seeing what our options are on how we can look at potentially having a light or something in the near future. City Hall Park Construction, there is a potential donor to help us out with creating this, a park right next to City Hall. Forty Second and Osage Park Construction, that's also going to include our emergency family housing in that area and as well as a park for that community. Sankey Park Improvements, there's already been a grant that council's aware of that was awarded. So that will be looking at those improvements. And Waddle Bridge Improvements, as you all know, Waddle Bridge is currently in very definite need of repair in order to be able to still have functions like the jamboree and even just community markets and things like that there. Next one is being effective and efficient government. So we are going to be looking at doing a council rules update. And then rejuvenate essential services. We are working on updating our emergency management plan, including a COOP and a CAP and just making sure that communication process is also involved in that update. We are hoping to look at new library construction. We are hoping to be able to identify and purchase a property to eventually start the new library construction. There's also now moving on to economic strength, a request to look at downtown vacancy reduction as well as downtown design standards. Council has also requested we look at land acquisition as well as increasing our grant applications and acquisition. And then finally, a city marketing plan to start sharing with the community and outsiding, outside communities and the rest of, of Oregon and other areas. What a beautiful place this is.
Any questions or comments from counselors? Madam Mayor, City Manager Young, that's a great, robust goal.
Yes, it is.
Any other questions or comments from council?
You all have the opportunity to revise it right now, to take some of them off, to put some more on. Don't recommend that one necessarily unless we take something off, but still.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the City Council twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five goals.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Thorstedt. Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Potomahler.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yeah.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve city council goals for this next year. Moving on, reports of committees and reports from committees that council sit on. Reports of city officials, city managers report.
I'll keep mine fairly short. I want to thank the majority of council of you who are able to attend the chamber banquet as well as give a shout out to the Chamber of Commerce. It was a lovely, it was a lovely banquet. I also want to acknowledge that our mayor gave out two awards. One to our very own Angela Clegg for all of the work that she's been doing and another to Milton Moran for all of the work he's been doing in leading CTC throughout the past very challenging years. And just, I want to say it was a lovely event and thank you everybody who attended. And again, thank you to the chamber and thank you to staff who was able to attend too. The city had a nice turnout there. Then we also hosted coffee with colleagues with the chamber again this morning. And it was really nice to be able to have so many small and local businesses join us today at City Hall. We don't always get to see everybody and we're here all day. So it's nice when we're able to interact with all of the businesses. Another item I just wanted to bring up to council is the League of Oregon Cities. If you can also feel free to come sit closer, if that would make it easier for you to hear me. I can only speak so loudly. So, but thank you. So we will also have, the League of Oregon Cities is having their conference on April twenty fifth to twenty sixth in Klamath Falls. And council, of course, is, is more than welcome to attend. If you want to attend, please let us know and we'll make arrangements for you. Klamath Falls. It is a long place. So, and that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Young. Mayor's report. I just want to remind you all that you should have received an email from the Ethics Commission regarding filing your, your SEI for the year before April fifteenth. So that's just a friendly reminder. And I was going to mention the LLC training as well, but City Manager Young already did so. It was a good time at the chamber and, yeah, coffee with colleagues was nice this morning. And we actually had two visitors this evening because of that. So glad to have them here. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is department director reports. Any questions of counselors for the department directors or if department directors want to share?
There we go. I just want to make council aware that next month is Child Abuse Awareness Month. And on April sixth, we will have a walk for the cause at the Police Department at nine AM. So we have a, you know, short presentation. We do a march in the area there and then also have some light refreshments afterwards. So I would encourage you, if you are available that morning at nine AM, we would love to have you out and also feel free to spread the word for us.
Thank you, Chief. I had one question from your report, Chief, if I, if I may. There's just one statistics that really stood out to me. Total juveniles in custody for February twenty twenty four rose by seventy six percent.
You know, I was actually just looking at that a few minutes ago and I was wondering myself the, I don't know for a fact why that is. The only reasonable conclusion that I can come with that seems logical is we have an SRO that's back in our schools. And about, and so we have more contact with juveniles just because of that. So I'm not sure if that's exactly why, but it sure seems reasonable to conclude that.
Possible. Great. Thank you so much for that. Any other questions from counselors? Regarding council business for good of the order, we could discuss whether we would like SMAC to come be on the agenda or not. It's up to counselors. SMAC, that organization that was presented earlier.
I'm all for a voice and Salem, no doubt about it. I'd like to have the city's feedback regarding it. What's your thoughts? You guys didn't really speak up regarding it.
I think there's definitely a need for a voice from the rural small communities. I think our needs differ from the larger cities. And I think that us being involved in some sort of coalition of some kind is useful or at least collaborating with other smaller rural communities. I think very highly of Scott McDowell over in Brownsville. And because he is recommending it, I am more interested than I think I would necessarily be in another group. That being said, I think there's also other ways that council can choose to be involved. So I think it could definitely be a positive thing. I think it's up to council to decide if it's where you want to spend this part of the budget. It's around just, what, just under six thousand dollars annually. And that, I think that's really the decision for you all to make is if that's where you want to spend your dollars there. I think being involved in a, in a larger group, I think is important. I do think we have a voice. But I think rural cities need a larger voice.
I mean, I see where, how we get our, measure our return on investment from the LLC. How are we going to measure the return on investment from this?
I think that's an excellent question. So, which is why we haven't put this on the agenda yet. Because I think there's still a lot of questions that we would need to have answered before.
The next, the next thing is, like I said, I'm all for having a voice up in Salem, no doubt, especially us, our small communities. The only, the only thing, I'm not a big fan of that fee structure that he presented. Because if I got a population of nine thousand nine hundred ninety nine, you know, I'm paying this and I have a population of ten thousand one, I'm paying higher. And, you know, and I can look back at several other cities with less, are they going to get less service or, you know, but they get the exact same service as I am, but they're paying less. I understand being a small city, but I'm just not, I'm just not a big fan of that, the way that that fee structure has been structured personally. But I'm all for a voice to Salem, no doubt about it.
Madam Mayor, I, I think it's a good idea too. And I do feel bad about the people like, let's just use Brownville, Brownsville. It's, it, it, it's not going to make as much, has as much money to spend on this thing, but you know, you have to pay your fair share. You ever heard that before? I'm just kidding. But, but I think it's a good idea. And, and we have another, somebody talking to the, up there instead of the LLC. Because I'm not, I don't know about them sometimes, but, but they're, they're heavy. I mean, they're, they're really good and they, they do a lot of stuff. So maybe we can have some, somebody besides Portland maybe.
Oh, I think it'd be a good thing to join.
Yeah, I do too.
I'm concerned because the bills that are going to be dropped are going to be dropped. I'm concerned because the bills that are going to be dropped are going to be dropped anyway. And um, the League of Oregon Cities is already looking through them. We have council members that are already looking through them. We have city staff that are already looking through them. And we're really blessed with the people and the access that we have when something comes up. Um, I don't feel that as a city that we're going to see a return on this. Um, that kind of money um, could be spent in paint, it could be spent on sending our own staff up there. And um, I just, I I'm not for it. I I think that I'm I'm just not for this one. There might be another one that I would consider, but I'm not for this one.
So Madam Mayor, if I may, um, as everybody probably knows, I've been advocating for more than five years for free, and it's really hard to get your voice heard. Um, I appreciate that they want to have a coalition of multiple small cities. Um, but for me, until they've proven and have a track record and have reputation and relationships to where they're effective, it's hard for me to cough up the thousands of dollars just to be a part of a group. So that's where I'm at.
Counselor Thorstedt?
Okay. So I'm not sure we had, we have, well, one, two, we have a consensus to bring it to the agenda, but I don't know if, um, yeah.
Okay, we do have a consensus to bring it to the agenda?
Well, I think we had council. Potam Mahler, were you okay with it?
No, you are not. Okay, then we don't have consensus. We will wait for it, and we will wait for him to prove their, yeah, that's okay. We can come back to this later. All right. So is there any other council business for the good of the order? Yes.
Um, I got my old thing, I, oh. I thought I was going to get through this really easy. Um, I put in my resignation to the city. Uh, city attorney uh, resign uh, May eleventh, that's my birthday. Um, I uh, been privileged to work for the city of Sweet Home, for the city council, for the court, and for the citizens of Sweet Home for the last forty three years. And I wish all the very best.
So, Mr. Snyder, you've done a phenomenal job for our community. And thank you for your service.
Forty three years, that's so impressive. Thank you, Mr. Snyder. May eleventh, are we allowed to throw you a party then? A right, a party for retirement, but also a birthday party, it sounds like. So, yeah. Thank you so much, Mr. Snyder, for your years of service. I know you are completely dedicated to our community. So thank you. Um, if that's all, we will just close the meeting out at uh, eight oh three.